Okay. Oh, it's time, sorry. And welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. I see attendance is down for March 12th, 2020. If you have a cellphone with you, now is a good time to shut it off. I'm glad to see everybody's maintaining their social distance. If you want to speak to us about an item on the agenda today, you can fill out, you can find a form like this out on the table in the lobby. If you'll fill it out, that'll help us with our paperwork, keep us on track. And they tell me there are actually some cushions out there as well, so employ those if you're on risk. The first item on the agenda is receipt of the minutes, February 27.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion second to receive the minutes of the February 27th Planning Commission meeting. Cast your votes, please. They are received.
Somebody's...
Matt, turn yours back on just for a second. Okay, there's Rusty. Okay. Ace is here, okay. Mary, turn your light on for a second. Yes, it's working. Okay, thank you. They are received. We have continuance requests.
We have several uncontested requests. Item 17 is withdrawn. Items 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23 have been deferred to March 26th. Items 24, 25, 26 have been deferred to April 9th, and item 27 deferred to April 23rd.
Is there anyone present who wish to be heard on any of those items?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Brian Neal. I live at 529 Northwest 174th Street. I turned in a request to speak to item 24 on the agenda. I know it's been deferred until April 9th, but I have a petition of 20 individuals, property owners and residents of that subdivision, in opposition to opening Valley Crest Street to the north. And I have it to present, and I understand maybe I need to file it.
Will you be able to come with it, come back to us when we hear this item on April the 9th?
I hope to, but I work for the state, and sometimes I'm required to be other places, and I'm not in charge of my schedule, so...
You're certainly welcome to leave your petition with us. We definitely would like to have that.
Okay, certainly. To do that.
If you wish to be heard, we can pull this item, and you can tell us what you want to tell us. I'm not sure we'll remember it on the 9th when we vote, but...
Well, I understand. I just wanted to make sure that I appeared. I had filed a protest as well earlier, and it should be with your documents.
Okay.
But the main concern was the opening Valley Crest, existing Valley Crest Road to the north into the proposed development. One drawing that we'd gotten preliminary plat had been one way, and then it was changed, and then a revised one, and then the one that was presented on your agendas or online was the original preliminary plat, so there's been some differences.
Is that because you fixed this problem?
I'm not sure what the, what was the problem. Sorry, I was talking to staff.
Oh, okay. There's been two preliminary plats proposed. There was the original and then a revised, and the revised was the one that was in the mailing that was most recently sent to the residents in the area. And the agenda that was posted online refers back, or has a picture of the original plat, and the original plat would not open up the street, the Valley Crest. It would be a stubbed street, and it would back into a lot, a planted lot.
Right.
But the revised diagram would show it opening Valley Crest to the north and all the way to 178th Street.
So you're, yeah, so what I believe, the concern from, they don't want us to connect.
Correct.
They don't want the connectivity.
Right.
So we had a land swap agreement with the gentleman that owns the piece next to it, so we revised it. He backed out at the closing table, so we had to revise it again, which is why we've continued it. I will provide this gentleman with my contact. We're happy to meet and discuss it. But we are in this quandary where to satisfy them, you guys will want connectivity, so...
So let's do this. Leave us your petition.
Certainly.
Get with Mr. Box and see if he has anything to tell you that will ameliorate your concerns.
Okay.
I would suggest if there's a whole neighborhood and a whole petition full of people who are interested, that maybe a neighborhood meeting would be in order. If not, then we'll hear this item on the 9th of April.
Okay.
And if you can come back to us, that would be lovely.
I'll plan to, but again, I work for the state, and sometimes I'm told to be places, and I have to go, so...
And I say all that unless there's some feeling amongst the commission that we need to just go ahead and hear this today.
We were hoping there could be a crash gate that could separate the existing subdivision, valley subdivision to the north.
I don't think there's anything to review today, is there?
No.
So...
And I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Thank you so much.
Surely.
I do want to warn the gentleman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to warn you that the city generally looks favorably on connectivity.
Understand.
And reconnecting to neighborhoods. I mean, I'd imagine that whenever this subdivision, Valley Crest, is currently in for that area...
It's the valley subdivision.
I mean, the city probably pushed to have that connection when that was developed.
Well, to the south, there's at Sunny Hollow, there's a crash gate that separates PUD 1, I believe, 1169, from the valley subdivision, and that was at the, the city had requested that because there'd only been one entrance in to where the duplexes are now in that PUD.
Sure.
But in this one, I...
We can't litigate the case there. Are you warning yet?
And I'm not trying to. I was just, by way of explanation, because you raised it, and that's all I was trying to do.
Same. I just wanted to...
Understand.
Warn you a lot of times that it's seen as a positive.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down.
All right, you have it.
Anybody else? Was there anybody else who wanted to be heard on any of the items that we're about to either continue or withdraw? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to continue or withdraw the items as read.
Second.
I have a motion second to continue items 17 through 27, continue items 18 through 27, and withdraw item number 17. Cast your votes. They are so continued or withdrawn as indicated. We do seem to have an additional continuance, is that right?
Yes, we have one new request, item 11, PUD 1755, to defer to March 26th.
Is there anybody here who wish to be heard on that item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Seeing no one, I'll make a motion to continue PUD 1755 to March 26th.
Second.
I have a motion second to continue item 11. Cast your votes, please. It is continued. We have a few items on our agenda that are relatively routine in the sense that there is not protest that we're aware of, and for which staff is recommending approval, and we vote on those sometimes in a group rather than individually, and call that our consent docket. So would you read that for us, please?
Item 1 is a final plan of Redstone Ranch, Phase 6. That's located north of West Britton Road and west of North Mustang Road. Item 2, final plan of Eagle Point Business Park 2, and that's located south of West Reno Avenue and west of South Council Road. And 3, final plan of Highland Ranch, located south of West Britton Road and east of North Mustang Road.
Do we have anybody here who wish to be heard on any of those items? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of items 1, 2, and 3 on the consent docket.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve items 1, 2, and 3. Cast your votes, please. They are approved. So items to be heard, we'll ask each of the applicants to come forward, give us their name and address, tell us what it is that they're here to ask us for. We may or may not have questions of them, and then we may or may not have discussion amongst ourselves. Is there anybody here who wish to be heard on any of those items? And I have a few people who have signed up to speak on various items. Then we'll hear from them the same way. Ask them to come forward, give us their name and address, tell us what their concerns or questions are.
Item 4 is an application for a specific plan located at 3824 and 3900 Northeast 104th Street.
Is the applicant present?
Good afternoon. Mark Zizow, 1 East Sheridan Avenue. If you recall, we rezoned this property about two years ago for a large-scale industrial warehouse. Plans have since changed. The development was platted as a much smaller industrial park, and this application is for the first two buildings of that. It meets all of the requirements in the PUD, including setbacks. Happy to answer any questions.
Let's talk about EMD signage.
We are not proposing an EMD sign on this building. EMD signage in this PUD was permitted with review of Planning Commission. There are plans for EMD signage at the entrance, but that'll come in a separate...
But not as part of this application?
No, ma'am.
Commissioners, I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Do we have any questions of our applicant? Comments or observations about the specific plan?
Just note that the staff report indicates that it meets the technical requirements of the PUD.
If not, then I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the specific plan for 1674A.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve item number 4. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you.
It is approved.
Item 5 is an application to rezone 8505 North Air Depot Boulevard from AA to SPUD 1195.
Is our applicant present?
Yes. Yes.
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Dave Oliver, Timber Ridge Custom Homes, 5120 Gallardia Parkway.
And so what is this application, please?
This application is for a zoning from agriculture for less than five acres. Land was gifted to the daughter. The daughter has since deeded that to us to build her a home to sell it back to her.
There was some question conveyed to us in the form of a letter about the precedent that this would set with respect to opening up the possibility of, you know, subdivision-style zoning in the area. Did you want to speak to that?
No, ma'am. We are not looking to do that. It's a property, a family property. One house on that two-acre lot, the other one remaining on the three acre.
Does the applicant own more property?
No, ma'am. Just that property there, the two acres.
So there's not a way to build the home on a larger piece of property there?
No, ma'am. We actually had to have the surveyor give us an easement to even get to that property.
Okay.
It's in the back corner of the mother's property.
I do have someone signed up to speak.
Yes.
Mr. Dozier?
Yes, James Dozier at 8505 North Air Depot. I think our question is, looking at the plaque, it's showing the whole property is being rezoned to residential. I guess we have a question as to why is it necessary as opposed to just the two acres or one acre that he's speaking of? Does it have to be rezoned at all? I mean, how's it going to affect us? I think we're just kind of curious as to why they need to rezone it.
Would you like to explain that, Curtis? Why it's necessary to include the whole property in this process?
Curtis Ligon, subdivision zoning, it would leave the remaining property in nonconformity. So by bringing it in, then it's two lots that are under the spud and then would be deemed legal by your vote.
So we would be creating a nonconformity. We would be leaving the remaining property, if it were not included in the SPUD, in a situation where it was not in compliance with the zoning regulations. So by bringing it in, you're including both pieces. In some ways, it's, I don't want to say too much about that, I guess. It's sort of a protection in the sense that you know what will happen to the whole piece of property, not just to the one piece.
Okay. Okay, that helps. Okay.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicants?
Is the applicant in agreement with the two technical evaluations that are shown? Is there any affirmative there?
Commissioners?
With no other conversation, I'll move approval of spud 1195.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve item number 5. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Item 6 is an application to rezone 3401 Northwest 23rd Street from C1 to SPUD 1200.
Give us your name and address, please.
Evan King on behalf of Kelly Dawson, address 620 North Robinson. Ms. Dawson is the owner of this property and could not be, and the applicant, she couldn't be here today. I'm standing in as her attorney. She has the, so I told her not to come.
So tell us what it is you're asking for.
We are asking that the property at the location of 3401 Northwest 23rd Street be rezoned from, or rezoned from C1 to spud property, specifically to allow the proposed or change the spud to allow retail services under 59, 8300.63, and also medical services under 59, 8300.52. We've submitted a master design statement as well as all the other required documents, and believe that it does meet the requirements. I would take a note that there has been a minor change proposed to us regarding the original application, and that relates to the following, or the specific uses. In the original application, the use is permitted on the site include a community recreation general. That since, we believe, has been recommended that we strike that, and we would also agree with that. As well as some other technical language in the original application has been changed to reflect in accordance with the municipal code. I believe that might have been submitted to the commission, but I'm unaware if it has been or not.
I assume those changes have been already made, since they're not reflected in the Commissioners, as you know, I'm not a fan of residential conversion, including in maybe even especially along Northwest 23rd Street. I assume there's no plan to replace the structure. You're going to continue to use the structure. This is a residential structure that's already been converted to nonresidential use. There's no parking in the front. It's entirely surrounded by commercial uses, and it is hard by an interstate highway. To me, this is, you know, an appropriate use of an SPUD. It acknowledges the reality of the property's situation, and it permits, you know, appropriate uses of the property without intensifying those beyond what's necessary to accomplish the goal. So I have no problems with it. There's a little bit of confusing language in the staff report about access off of 23rd Street. There's no access to the side off of 23rd Street. It comes off of Woodward.
I think there's, it may be shared access in the property that's zone 02 versus...
Oh, to the, because you have shared access. That's right.
Right.
Okay, okay.
I used to go to Hugo's Taki's Ria, which was right next to this, all the time. I used to live over there. I even did laundry at the laundromat next to it. Very familiar with it. It's been retail, as Ms. Powers points out, as long as I've been aware of the building. So to me, this makes complete sense. Been a problem with it.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Assuming that all the statements that were made were collected into the document already by staff, I don't see any TEs, so I'm going to say we make a straight recommendation for approval on this. And that's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve item number 6. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Item 7 is an application to rezone 11330 North May Avenue, Suite B and C from 02
to SPUD 1201.
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
I am the applicant, Joyce Cobb, 11330 North May Avenue.
Will you, will you do me a favor? Pull the microphone down a little bit, just towards you. It'll bend. There you go. Thank you.
Can you hear me now? I'm the applicant, Joyce Cobb, 11330 North May, spud 1210. We're requesting to, in this spud, to allow retail use. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
There are no technical evaluations. I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, commissioners, do we have any questions for Ms. Cobb? If not, I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to recommend approval. Second.
I have a motion second to approve item number 7. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item A is an application to rezone 9100 Northwest Expressway from R1 and PUD 1122 to SPUD 1202.
Mr. Allen?
Good afternoon. My name is Charles Allen. I'm with Allen Engineering, 1601 Southwest 89th Street. Brenda Wyatt with Salazar Homes is also here this afternoon. We've got a little over two acres that, a little over two acres that we're looking to develop into basically office warehouse consisting of six buildings, 13 units measuring 50-foot wide by 50-foot, 55-foot deep, 2,750 square feet. Typically, we'd have one little office and a bathroom. The rest would be kind of a warehouse manufacturing area. We've read through the TEs. The only thing we'd kind of object to is the parking. We've got, we've got 13 units with overhead doors that are striped off, or will be striped off, that would allow for parking there. We also have parking available inside the building. Staff has put that we need to meet the zoning regulations, which would require 10 more spaces than what we've shown on the site plan.
Have you had any meetings with the residential property owners to the south of you?
No, we have not.
Have you heard from any of them?
No.
And we were discussing this item prior to the meeting. I have just a real negative reaction to the idea of vehicular connection to the south.
We were looking to put a crash gate there.
That's kind of what I...
It wouldn't be connected.
I like the idea of pedestrian access, and I would want that preserved.
Okay.
But vehicular access just doesn't seem appropriate to me.
No, we were just using that for an emergency access.
I, you know, this is, this is a difficult piece of property. You look at it and you think, oh, no, of course it's perfectly appropriate for all kinds of commercial uses. But turning in and out of property along Northwest Expressway, especially every little lot, you know, is hard, and it's, there's not just anything that could be developed here, I don't think.
We're not opposing across access. It's just, I don't know, you know, physically how it's going to be, would ever occur.
Yeah, I, yeah, I feel strongly about this. I don't think vehicular access to the south is appropriate, other than like with a crash gate. I think it just...
I agree.
Would be a bad idea.
And so, as you mentioned, the garage doors earlier. So is this going to be predominantly an industrial kind of storage, office, storage warehouse?
It's, you know, it's set up for your plumber that's there in the morning to get his equipment, have an office there to do his billing, that sort of thing.
Right. And so do you envision all the buildings being like that?
Yes.
So the fast food use and dining uses that were included, do you anticipate needing those?
No.
Okay.
Are you willing to strike them? There's some language about the appearance of the building, the architectural materials. You're only proposing to do the 70% masonry on the northern buildings, is that right? The ones that face Northwest Expressway?
They'll be 100% brick. I think we showed on the elevation, 70, I mean, 100%.
So you are doing 100%?
Depending on how, the roof line may change, so there would be an eve in there that would be...
But the front elevation where the entries are on every building will be, have masonry on them as well?
We had a four-foot wainscoting, then it would be metal siding above that. It would be all metal siding, but then a brick veneer on the lower four feet.
Okay. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Was there anything else, Commissioner Clare?
No, so we do want to add a TE for the access on the south shall be emergency access with a crash goat gate only, and pedestrian access. Are you agreeable to that?
Yes. And then we'd be eliminating, sorry. Another one about parking. I don't seem to have it suddenly.
How many spaces are you short?
10.
Have you talked to staff about using landscaping or bike racks to just avoid that issue? A lot of times you can add those things to meet the parking requirement. It's kind of a trade-off in the code.
We haven't talked about that.
That's probably...
We, you know, we have the space, I guess. I mean, like I said, you know, we're going to, we're going to stripe off in front of the overhead doors, 13 of those, and typically the owners will pull up there and park there anyway, so, you know, there'll be parking vehicles inside the warehouse as well, so I don't see that, I don't know that the additional 10 spaces are ever going to be used, to be honest.
Curtis, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this was mostly about the additional uses. If there were to be fast food or any of the other uses listed that weren't necessarily showing up in the site plan, that we would be covered by this TE. Is that the case?
I'm sorry. Would you come forward, please? Give us your name and address.
Brenda Wyatt, 1410 Valley Ridge Road, Norman, Oklahoma, 73072. We have no plans to put any fast food in there at all. We intend for it all to be warehouse office space. So we have no problem striking anything about fast food or any kind of food, for that matter.
Yeah, my understanding was that the MDS specified a certain number of parking stalls, and that this was just there to cover whatever uses might go in there at any point in the future. Is my understanding of purpose this TE?
So the two ways to deal with that are to find some way to offset it per code, either with landscaping or bike racks, or hiding the parking behind the buildings, or to eliminate those uses. And that's one option, too, I suppose. The kind of commercial retail uses that normally require a lot of parking.
Which they've agreed to, though, right?
Well, they require...
We haven't specified the use, we didn't specify the use.
That's right. They've agreed to remove fast food. They haven't agreed to remove all of the retail uses, or the retail uses that are particularly troublesome with respect to parking. What are you going to suggest?
What am I suggesting?
Yeah, about that.
Well, I mean, if we, you know, the uses that require the additional parking, removing those, then TE number 2 would simply go away, I believe.
So if...
If we did have higher uses, we're not going to have a garage door. Space in front of garage door would be parking. So I don't know if we need to rewrite item 2.
I mean, all item 2 really says is that whatever the code requires, that's your parking requirement.
Right.
So, I mean, I think, I think that's the point that the planning director is trying to make, is that the TE is really not the issue. It's the use units that are the issue.
Okay.
I don't think you need to eliminate it. You're going to be able to meet it if you take those out. We just need to eliminate those retail units you're not going to use anyway.
Well, if we look on the, on the site plan, if you look at the square footage of office and warehouse, we need 56 spaces. We've provided... We've provided 46 spaces. We're 10 short for that use of office warehouse.
But office warehouse is not the only use in the PUD or SPUD. So the point is, if you wish to reduce the need for parking by reducing some of the uses that you have reserved, we can do that right now.
Well, and to Craven's point, though, we don't have to do anything at all today because technically, you're allowed a 25 percent reduction in your parking amount. And, you know, if you were required 50, how many?
56.
56, you know, 25 percent, you're good. I mean, you're covered on that 10 spaces if, right, you guys do the things required to meet those reductions, which is landscaping, really, in this case. So if you guys can agree to additional landscaping that would allow that reduction, we don't have to do anything.
Of course.
Okay.
Or a good new-fashioned bike rack.
I mean, a lot of bicycles on Northwest Expressway.
No one that can ride to this as a daily biker.
Oh, yeah. You're going to ride out there, Asa.
No one's going to ride to these, and I get that.
Yeah, 55.
Before we get too lighthearted about that, I noticed that there is no requirement for sidewalk. And on the one hand, one might say, who would walk down Northwest Expressway? But I am a little bit curious about why we are not requiring some pedestrian access along Northwest Expressway.
Arterial sidewalks are required on arterial streets, and this is a highway, and sidewalks aren't required anywhere up and down Northwest Expressway.
Okay.
Don't do it.
Okay.
So there's 30, approximately 30 use units here, and I would say that there's a good chance that half of them don't apply. Do we need to go through each one and ask if you'd like to strike them, or is there an easier way to?
If there are particular ones that you think you would like to see stricken, or that you think, you know, require the maximum amount of parking, you're certainly welcome to ask. I think what we're trying to tell the applicant is that there's a way for them to get where they need to be on their parking. They've agreed that they're not going to use it for fast food, so
Just hearing from you, what you intend to do, cultural exhibits, library services, community centers, adult daycare facilities, alcohol beverage and retail sales, childcare, food and beverage retail sales, payday title loan agencies, retail sales and services, pawn shops. Those are eating establishments, sit-down alcohol, those are all seem not in line with what you're looking to do.
Correct.
Would you be agreeable to remove those use units?
Yes.
Did you make a list?
I did.
Good, okay. Have I already asked if we have anybody else here who wants to be heard on this item? I don't have anyone signed up. Are we ready for a motion?
I'll take a stab at this. I will make a motion to approve with the following amendments. Striking use units 8250.5 cultural exhibits, 8250.11 library services and community centers, use 8300.2 adult daycare facilities, use 8300.5 alcohol beverage retail sales, use 8300.25 childcare, use 8300.34 eating establishments drive-in, 8300.35 eating establishments fast food, 8300.36 eating establishments fast food with drive-through order window, 8300.37 eating establishments sit-down alcohol not permitted, 8300.41 food and beverage retail sales, 8300.57 payday title loan agencies, and 8300.65 retail sales services pawn shop. As well as adding TE for access on the south. The property shall be for emergency purposes only with the installation of a crash gate and pedestrian connection.
Second.
And with respect to the architectural materials, four-foot wainscoting across the facade, the front facade, 100 percent brick veneer remainder?
Yes, correct. Thank you.
On the Northwest Expressway side.
Just on the Northwest, so I thought we were talking about the whole thing.
The front, basically
The wainscoting or the 100 percent?
I thought the whole thing, but
My understanding is that you said on the front of the building where your entry is, on all the buildings?
That faces Northwest Expressway.
That face Northwest Expressway, but all, okay.
Will any of them face Northwest Expressway?
Just the two end units.
So all the rest of them would not have, you don't intend to do brick wainscoting?
I'm not crazy about the idea of them being metal buildings.
It'd be 100 percent brick for the elevations facing Northwest Expressway. The wainscoting would be on the
On everything else?
On the interior.
Okay, so the two buildings that face Northwest Expressway, 100 percent brick veneer, all your other buildings, four-foot wainscoting on the front elevation of brick?
The front office where you walk in, yes.
Yeah, the front, the entry elevation.
Right. Well, we were really just looking to do the front elevation of the front building there. Carry that. I mean, if you want to carry it around, that's fine, I suppose.
I think what we're looking for is that all buildings, their front elevation, have that four-foot brick veneer wainscoting.
Okay. But when you say the front of the building, just so we're clear, we're not talking about what's facing Northwest Expressway.
Well, you said the two
The entry. The entry.
Okay.
And the two that front Northwest Expressway is 100 percent brick?
On the, on the side facing Northwest Expressway.
On the side facing Northwest Expressway.
I'm not thrilled about the idea of these being metal buildings, frankly. Do we permit metal buildings in C-3? Or is it just because this is an SPOD?
My office is one just like these.
I'm sorry, what?
My office is just almost exactly like he's proposing here.
And I know, and they're very appropriate, especially in I-1 zoned areas, but in
C-3 district doesn't allow metal.
Does not?
Does not.
Does not, so that's problematic for me, but
I'm, given the nature of this, I mean, if the applicant agrees to that the two buildings that front Northwest Expressway are 100 percent brick, and then all remaining buildings get a four-foot brick wainscoting on the entrance side only, the front elevation, I'm okay with that.
Not just the face of the buildings for the two front, the whole, all four sides of the two front buildings? Or just the front that faces?
That's why I heard I might need a clarification. So on the two buildings that face Northwest Expressway, you said 100 percent brick, so are you saying just the one side that faces?
That's what we proposed, yes. Just the one side. If you want the, you know, the whole, the front two buildings to be 100 percent brick, I mean, we'll do that as well.
That would be a yes for me.
What's that?
That would be a yes for me. I think the two buildings along Northwest Expressway.
Yeah, I mean, that's worrying, because you're going to see those from basically three sides.
Okay.
So, so is that an additional TE or an amendment to?
Be an amendment to the development regulations in the MDS.
Continuing the motion, there would be an amendment to the architectural, item 2.1, architecture, that brick veneer would be required on all sides of the two buildings that front Northwest Expressway and four-foot on the front elevation of all remaining buildings.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve item number eight with the amendments read. Please cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
Item nine is an application to rezone 5012 Southeast 27th Street from R1 to R3.
Candelaria Herrera, 242 Southeast 52nd. I am wanting to rezone 5012 South Byers from R1 to R3.
I do not have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard? Commissioners, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, if there's no more conversation or any at all, I will recommend approval of PC 10643. Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve item number nine. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Item 10 is an application to rezone 137 Southeast 27th Street from R2 to R3.
Candelaria Herrera, 242 Southeast 52nd Street. I'm wanting to rezone 137 Southeast 27th from R2 to R3.
Commissioners, again, I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this item? There are no TEs.
I'll move approval of PC 10648.
Second. I have a motion, second, to approve item number 10. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 11 has been continued. Item 12 is an application to rezone 3224 Northeast 23rd Street from C-3 to SPUD 1203.
Is our applicant present?
Yeah, my name is Solomon Sotozernah, 3224 Northeast 23rd Street. And I need to rezone from C-3 Commercial to a spot in order, for allow me to a sell cars, auto sales, which I have an auto repair shop right now in the spot already. And I do have my dealer license already, that I have another location that I ran it out. But I need to move it to my location so I can operate it to business at the same time.
So tract two will remain not remain, will be converted to residential, R1 zoning, tract two, the back half.
Say it again.
Tract two, the south half of the property, will be converted to R1, single-family residential.
Well, I was thinking to do that, but not anymore.
I'm sorry?
I said, I was thinking to do that, but not anymore. I wanted to keep it all to C-3. Commercial.
When I discussed this item with Commissioner Pennington, he was very much of the impression that that was going to happen. And his his feelings about this very much were contingent upon that, so
It's probably what was noticed too, wasn't it?
I don't know. How was it noticed?
It had to have been noticed.
So if they don't do that, it would change our notice requirement, would it? If they don't adhere to the R1 on the back portion on track?
We'd have to go back and re-notify.
It would have to be renoticed. I also have someone signed up to speak on this item. So you understand you can't get this approved today if you withdraw your application for residential zoning on the back portion.
Okay, can you explain that a little bit?
Can I explain that?
Can I ask a question before the explanation? It's currently C-3? And you want to keep it all C-3?
Yeah, I wanted to keep it at a C-3 if possible, but I need the spa for allow to put my license on that address.
He wants to turn it into an automobile and equipment sales, an automobile dealership. So there's two ways you can do that. You can do it through a SPUD. You can do it through a special permit. And so they're seeking to do it through zoning in order to change the back portion of it to residential. And I think that was, you know, the basis upon which Commissioner Pennington was viewing it. So I do have someone signed up to speak on this matter. Mr. Warrior, did you want to speak to us about this? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Zenith Warrior, 5712 North Lottie Avenue. And I don't have any objections to the SPUD as has been outlined that I've read over that. I don't know of any homeowners that do also with that. I'm happy that the applicant has decided to invest some money along that particular corridor, that particular street area for that particular development with that. But I think the applicant for that back track, the back second track, was just going to have that as an option to be used for R1 development. He would choose to do that, that particular development for that. But we don't have any objections. I don't know of anyone that's had anything with that. So I just also, I would, just one thing I do, I just had a concern about along that area, looking at the traffic study along 23rd Street. I know this is not the place for that, but I would like to see possibly some, talk with a traffic engineer about some issues along that corridor. Other than that, I don't see any problem.
Thank you. So what are we going to do here?
Okay, see, we was thinking to make it an R1, but I thought, well, because I was going to sell my house, and then I couldn't sell it. So we decided to just keep it a C-3. But if you need to make it an R1, I can make it an R1 for the future.
I'm not clear about what we're doing. Are we going to hear the application as it stated?
I understand what he said, but he had priorly thought he'd want to build a residence there, but he said that he didn't want to sell the house. So, but if contingent upon that for approval, he's in agreement with it.
Yeah.
Well, the only way we can hear it today is if it's, if you leave it as it is with C-3 on the front and R1 in the back. As the application as it is, not the circumstances as they are. So do you want to hear this item today?
Yeah.
C-3 on the front, R1 in the back?
Do you want now?
C-3 on the front?
Yeah, C-3 in the front, residential in the back.
Okay, great. Commissioners?
I'll move approval of SPUD 1203.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 12. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you.
It is approved.
Item 13 is an application to rezone 3900 South Henni Road from AA to RA, single-family.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Joel Bryant, who is also here with us. This is an application off South Henni Road for approximately 20 acres to go from AA to the RA district. It is a almost identical application to that of the property immediately north of this tract, except this is smaller than what we had to the north. I believe to the north, we had some 40 acres or more. This is smaller in scale. What you can't tell by the exhibit there before you is the amount of RA zoning that exists in the area. So I did produce an exhibit of the zoning map for this area. And what you will see is the subject site, and then you will see a dozen, perhaps slightly less, developments that are all RA and very similar. What I handed out with the pictures is a development called Le Chateau. That is the development immediately to the north of the subject site. That is done by the same developer, Mr. Joel Bryant. There is some reference in the staff report to a concern about RA allowing smaller lots than acre. We are in the liminal stage of our planning process, but I do, I can tell you that the plat that has been drawn by the engineer, all lots are at least an acre. Some are approaching an acre and a half. That is, again, identical to what was approved and is being developed immediately north. If you look at the pictures, you'll see that these are very upscale, nice homes. It's been a wonderful addition to the area. I do want to thank Commissioner Privet for taking the time to meet with us. I have asked staff, I'm not aware of any protests that exist. I'm not aware of any issues that have been raised by citizens. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and would ask for your support. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and would ask for your support.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Mr. Privet, did you want to speak on this issue?
I, like David said, I mean, the neighborhood to the north is identically, you know, pretty much what we're trying to do here. I don't, I didn't personally see an issue with it. I talked to Councilman Stone, he didn't have an issue with it. I know staff does because it doesn't meet the plan conformance. Maybe they can speak to that. I'm sure it's, has to do with sanitary sewer and water access.
So why did you not bring a comp plan amendment for this?
We didn't believe one would be necessary. I mean, we know what staff would have said. I, I mean, in fairness, staff at this point is, is overworked with current caseload and, you know, they've, they've lost members of their staff. And so to file an application that we know the end result would be a recommendation for denial frankly seemed like a waste of staff's time and resources. Despite the fact that when you look at this area, the all developed areas predominantly are, are this AA, or excuse me, RA. And so, you know, the comp plan does not have a frankly provision for what we think this development is. And therefore, there wouldn't be any comp plan designation, I think, that would be compatible with this, despite the fact that it's compatible with the built environment in this area.
Commissioners?
So the existing property to the north, did it receive a comp plan amendment? Or was it? Did it require it, or?
The property to the north, as I understand it, was done about 2015, right when the comp plan was being put together. So at the time that this, so Henni Road is the dividing line between rural medium and rural low. So gone from two to five acres in rural medium to five plus acres in rural low. And Le Chateau may have been in the process when we were looking at all this. So when you look at it on the map, the kind of the prevailing land use patterns to the west are those two to five acre subdivisions. And east of Henni, yes, there are some, including Le Chateau, that are, that are smaller. But the prevailing pattern is, is very large lots and undeveloped lots. So at the time, that, the decision was made to make Henni Road the dividing, the dividing line. And, you know, the, the planning commission at the time had concerns and, you know, city still does about, and there's ongoing conversations both in the city and DEQ about what an appropriate lot size is for a septic system. So that, that's kind of the background there in the, in history for the, for that development.
Yeah, and I agree with the director. It wa, it was 2016 that we did Le Chateau. And, you know, typically the fights about private sanitary sewer solutions are when we're, we're trying to go down to the half acre. When you have in excess of an acre, I am not aware of any fights about that or concern because you're, at that point, you're more than double what the ODEQ requires for their minimal standards.
And the, and we could, you know, if, if we were to extend rural medium across Henni, you know, we could certainly do that, but we would still have the problem where rural medium is two to five acres and there are provisions in rural medium to allow one acre lots, but you need a certain amount of open space. So I'm not confident that, that RA would get us there, maybe RA2. So we would still have a problem if there were a comp plan amendment of trying to get there. Because it wasn't envisioned when, 2015 wasn't envisioned that smaller lots like one acre would really be all that prevalent in, in these rural areas.
So the, so what you're showing us on the exhibit, you handed out this map, everywhere where it's yellow and white is RA, is what you're telling us?
Yes, all of the yellow hatched, yeah, yellow and white, is a currently zoned RA property within the city.
Oh, I'll see if we can get it through or not. I mean, comp plan thing is, if we pass it, I mean, does it make it nonconformance with the comp plan? Is that even?
It's no different than several others that have gone through in similar manner.
Right. I, I mean, we pass these and we've never really mentioned, you know, comp plan amendments what being needed. I mean...
I, I don't mean, I'm not sure whether we're doing them a favor or not. I mean, it, so the comp plan amendment came through, staff recommends denial. Not surmising that we're, this is necessarily going to go through, but I'm just saying if it did, okay, now there's no comp plan amendment, so there isn't technically a rural medium on the other side of Henni. So we didn't alter that. It's just whether or not this, this specific parcel is appropriate for the zoning, but we haven't made a comp plan. I mean, I have mixed emotions because I understand, I'm not, I don't think we want to encourage from a policy standpoint applicants coming up bypassing that part of the process because it's not included in the legislative process and we just send it on through. I mean, this is the liminal part of this process where we're going to take this case past the city council. I mean, so I, I mean, I'm just, I'm torn because I know staff has, you know, probably, there are probably instances where staff would have mixed emotions about whether or not a comp plan amendment would actually be presented because it creates more problems because you are extending that zoning across the street, so.
But keep in mind, everything you see east of Henni Road, I guess, is in violation of the comp plan then.
Well, it was probably passed before.
Before.
I think in 2016, the current comp plan was in place, correct?
It was adopted in 15.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if, if there was a comp plan amendment done. I don't think there was here.
There wasn't.
My, my guess is this was in process while the plan was being adopted. Maybe there was, you know, preliminary plat or conversations that were ongoing that weren't showing up in the data yet.
I mean, I, it was a, it was a fight. I did it for, for Joel. I mean, so it was, it was not something that staff supported at the time. Like I said, the, the new comp plan was, was in place at the time, so it was, it was the same discussion we're having here.
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is that if we were to amend the comp plan to make it rural medium, it would, it would still not comply with rural medium. It would comply, it would be closer than it would be under rural low, but it would, we're still in an awkward situation either way, just because Plan OKC doesn't contemplate this type of development in the rural areas. The closest that it contemplated was one acre lots with some green area that, that is held in come. So it's, it's close and you could get there with RA2. That's what Plan OKC anticipated.
Again, in my opinion, it's just, it doesn't recognize, Plan OKC doesn't recognize a very popular development pattern in this part of the city. I mean, I would guess that Mr. Privet drives by developments just like this all the time. When you have only 20 acres, there really isn't space to do the clustering and do large open spaces. People that live on an acre or more tend to not want open space. That's why they live on an acre or more. They want their own open space.
Well, I think, you know, part of the, part of the concern though and question about that, of course, has to do with the utilities, you know? It's like, you can, you can build one acre lots on any R1 property anywhere you want, right? I mean, it doesn't, the fact that you zone it for that, it doesn't, doesn't require you to build 6,000 square foot lots. It's not that we're in some way prohibiting these kinds of development. It's a matter of, you know, what it takes to get that designation. And, and the, the decision not to permit one acre development or to have a specific designation for one acre development had more to do with the utilities, having that many wells, having that many septic systems. So, um, this is a problematic question. There's no question about that. I get that it's a popular, um, product in, in residential development, but there are other places you can build that.
Well, I mean, you're, you're not going to develop acre plus lots with water and sewer. It's just, that's the reality. You're, you're not going to have it. You have acre plus lots when you don't have water and sewer.
Developments come through that were argued over on, I can think of at least several occasions where that were half acre and wanted, because that's what DEQ's limit is.
That's right.
Currently.
Currently, right. So that, that we ended up approving because there was no other way. There was no reasonable belief that it was going to be served by sewer and water any time. And if it meets their requirements, you know, that was the thought process at the time and those were put through almost, almost every time, so.
I'll, I'll make a motion if it's approved, it's not, it's not, it's not. I'll make a motion to approve PC 10649.
I have a motion. I'm sorry?
My comment, the recommendation is that if approved, an additional 17 feet of right-of-way should be requested along Henni Road to bring the right-of-way with standards set by subdivision replacement.
We agree to that.
I have a motion second to approve item number 13. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 14 is an application to rezone 11, 11,100 West Memorial Road from PUD 1464 to PUD 1756.
Good afternoon, Kendall Billen with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. This is obviously a PUD application for a 153 acre parcel that lies generally at the southeast corner of Memorial Road and Mustang Road. Just a real quick, a little bit of history on this particular piece of property. If you were to back up to 2012, this tract as well, if you can see on, on the screen, the property to the west was all under one common ownership. It was 240 acres. At that time, the owner decided that he needed to rezone the property in order to sell it. He was not a developer, but he, in my opinion mistakenly, attempted to rezone the property himself. During that process, he was asked to put this, the whole 240 acres in a PUD because it was all right on the hills of the Village Verde PUD, which is 477 acres immediately to the west. As part of that process, I think he was asked if he was all right with 8,000 square foot lot minimum. I think he unknowingly agreed to do that, in my opinion, and so that's what is spurring this application today. Since that time in 2014, that property that's on the west side of, immediately adjacent to Mustang Road, it was rezoned from that PUD, an approved preliminary plat. You can see that the tract on the north is actually already constructed. It's in essence R1ZL, has 5,000 square foot lots. And then the south portion is actually in an approved preliminary plat and is zoned for duplexes. So that western tract has already been removed from this PUD. Obviously, our intent with this application, it's the same PUD with the exception of we're asking for 6,000 square foot minimum instead of the 8,000 square foot minimum on the lot. So you still get your architectural standard. I think if you look at it in terms of compatibilities and densities, obviously, I mentioned the Village Verde, that's 477 acres with about every zoning classification you can think of. I mean, it's got R4, it's got duplexes, even large quantities of the single family are 5,000 square foot lot minimum. And again, this, you know, immediately to our west, that has been rezoned to 5,000 square foot lots as well as duplexes. So I think if you look at that as well as what happens to the south, I think if you look at your comprehensive plan, which this is already designated as urban low, obviously the recommended densities for urban low is four to eight dwelling units per acre. I think our master development plan on this has 537 lots, so that yields about three and a half dwelling units per acre. So even this development with the smaller lots is still less than what your comprehensive plan would recommend. So we feel like it's a good application, that it's consistent, compatible. I think if you look at the TEs, we are in agreement with TE number three, that we will provide a connection to the school that's located in the northeast corner. In regards to the other two Es, we cannot agree to those on TE number one, as far as a connection or a street connection to the west. Obviously, we have the FEMA regulated floodplain that's a barrier and an obstacle, but then also the property that lies on the west side of the stream that I was referring to, there was a variance granted with that development, so there is no stub in that development. So in essence, there's nothing to stub to. And you'll notice on the companion preliminary plat that follows this one, there's not a variance request or any recommendation, and that's the reason, is because there's, there's no potential to stub. So we'd ask that TE one be deleted, then TE number two, as far as 100 foot setback from the stream banks. Um, you know, we have this current concept and you can tell, you can't see it as much on this, but if you look at the master development plan, you can see our concept, certainly you'll see it on the preliminary plat, to where we've got a, what we're calling a parkway street that enters in. The concept is, is we have single loaded, a single loaded street so that we don't have any lots on the floodplain side. Part of that concept is we want it to be more of an upper scale addition. We're bringing the street in so that you have pure visibility into that common area, but we do want the flexibility of kind of working around certain trees and those sort of things. If you look, I think we're, some places we're, you know, more than 100 feet, some places we're less. So like I say, we'd like that flexibility. We think that obviously it's FEMA regulated, it's regulated by the Corps of Engineers, we have to go through those permitting process, that's their job to regulate those things, and obviously we've got to adhere to that. So with that being said, we'd ask that TE one and two be deleted. We're in agreement with TE three, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We talked, we talked a little bit earlier today. You walked me through some things and, and I failed to ask you. So you, you were clear that you did not want to agree to the 100 foot to that back. Is there a distance that you would be agreeable to, a reduced distance?
I would prefer not to for the reason of, kind of like I mentioned, as far as wanting and needing the flexibility to design that street in the manner so that we can work around the trees. Obviously, if you look at what we're doing, I mean, we've, and, you know, it's broken up, but we've got a street that's 4,000 feet long. It's single loaded, so we're giving up some three and a half million dollars worth of lots for that concept in order to achieve this. I think, again, everything is regulated by the Corps of Engineers and FEMA. There's nothing about just carte blanche saying it's 100 feet. Granted, I guess you could work that into best standard practices, but there's nothing specific about this stream or any other stream that you can just randomly apply that to. In this case, like I say, if you look at the intent, I believe, which is to stay outside of the floodplain number one, but then obviously to allow the addition, you know, to not remove some of those trees that are on, near the stream bank, that's exactly what we're doing and providing. But I do not want to lock ourselves into, if I say 50 feet and it needs to be 45 feet, so I'd prefer not to agree to that TE.
The first run you took at that pitch was, it says 100 and it might need to be a few feet less than that. There's a big difference between 100 and 40.
Well, and exactly, and I couldn't tell you right now exactly from the stream bank where our street would lie in terms of, because if you look at the stream and look at how it enters, because even if we get into, if I were to agree to that, now we have to agree, where really is that stream bank? Well, if you look at most streams, you may have three opportunities to say that's the stream bank, or this is the stream bank, or that's the stream bank. That's what I'm saying. To simply say 100 feet from the stream bank, in my opinion, not only on this application, but philosophically, I have to look at the intent of what I think we're trying to accomplish. That I agree with and is the reason that we're not encroaching in the floodplains and we've come up with this design concept. But to try to, me, I want to leave the flexibility for us to do the right thing environmentally, as well as engineering, and still meet the people's criteria that are responsible for regulating these sort of streams, which we have to do. That's the reason that I don't want to agree to that TE.
I think this is probably a much bigger conversation than we can have today. We have a, a plan, goal that's pretty clearly stated. This was something that was, you know, developed along with the other goals of the plan over a long period of time and a lot of discussion with a lot of different people. I think if we're going to have it as a goal, we need to take it seriously. We need to find a mechanism that is enforceable, that does make sense. If this is not one of those things, then maybe we need to redefine it in some way. But I, I do not like having these things come to us week after week after week and having applicants just say, we're not going to do that, it doesn't make any sense, it's ridiculous. And either we should stop asking or we should find a way to make it functional, feasible, and enforceable, and then we ought to enforce it.
Can, can someone enlighten me from a staff perspective, why, I mean, I feel like we've had this conversation, but I've slept since then? There is a, you know, a FEMA floodplain, which is actually shown on the exhibit. I would totally understand why from a city purpose, we wouldn't want to allow people to build in a floodplain. What is the rationale behind the 100 foot stream bank as opposed to the floodplain line?
So the, the reason for the, it's, it's for the protection of the riparian zone, so it may or may not be a floodplain, but 100 feet is kind of a, a standard for an area that you would want to protect, kind of the runoff filtration, the trees. In this case, there are trees, and trees are important for a lot of reasons, including an amenity for the people who live there. So, you know, the 100 feet, you know, it can, it can vary, but that, that's kind of a standard that, that was chosen.
that was chosen when Plan OKC was done. And, you know, those are the main reasons, to protect the habitat, allow for water filtration that drains into the stream, that's one of the key reasons. If you don't have any filtration space, yes, it may not be in the floodplain, but water contamination, water quality is a big issue in a lot of areas in the city. So that is one of the key reasons for that hundred feet. Once you disturb that hundred feet, you have nothing that is providing any filtration that goes into our water system, which eventually we drink. So that, and the habitat, and tree preservation, that's an amenity for the people who live there. And the bottom line is, well, I mean, there are ways to design around these issues, designs can be altered. In this case, they're, it's very doable, in my opinion. There are a lot of reasons, of course, if you're a developer, why it couldn't or shouldn't be done, but it's doable from a design perspective. And yes, you would lose some lots, but they're also gaining lots from what they had originally entitled.
Got it. Thank you. Again, though, it's not as though, if you look at the permitting process, and, you know, you may have a stream that runs through the middle of a wheat field that's nothing but farmland, so you don't apply that standard as you would any, you know, different streams. So they vary, and part of the process that we go through is working with the Corps of Engineers. They decide whether or not, given our proximity to streams, whether or not we need to have an environmental scientist that goes out, does the testing, and delineates that, or whether or not they can tell from their information that we're staying far enough away with a buffer zone, that they feel that the riparian zone is protected. And so we have to go through that process with the Corps of Engineers, and then obviously with FEMA if we were to fill into the floodplain. We, you know, a few years ago, you back up before your previous comp plan, and you all saw many applications to where we were trying to recoup portions of the floodplain. We were taken, and so part of the comprehensive plan, I believe, was to kind of sort of mitigate that as well. You will see, most of the developments, especially our company, we've gotten away from doing that. And we know, I mean, it's not that we don't have some that we tried to recoup, especially if we feel like it's a manageable deal and doesn't have an adverse impact. But these, our concept alone stays out of the FEMA floodplain. You can tell our intent, by the way we've designed this thing, is to try to keep the trees, it's to do those sort of things. I just don't want to get myself, I want the flexibility, with us being professionals, to design it in a manner that we feels responsible by the floodplain, by the riparian zone, and all those sort of things. But I couldn't tell you today if that is fifty feet, if it's seventy feet. My comment earlier, I couldn't tell you with every point, and again, it's because if you were to look at a cross-section along this stream, that top of bank is, you know, what do you actually define that top of bank as? Because a lot of times, you'll get what I would consider a top of bank, but then you have another shelf, and you have another bank. It's part of the way that streams operate when they flood out. They will erode because of the flooding that happens, and so now we get into this situation as to, okay, where are we even going to call the top of the bank? That's the reason that I'm very cautious about just agreeing to a hundred feet. I would prefer, like I say, I think this is a great plan, I think this accomplishes the intent of your comprehensive plan, and again, the Corps of Engineers, it's their job to regulate these things, and they have to approve of what I'm doing.
With all due respect, I am not persuaded by your argument that you're wanting to do the right thing, and we should trust you to do the right thing. We have a standard, it's in place. I think, you know, one of the things we hear repeatedly when we meet with the development community is just tell us what the rules are, as long as they apply to everybody, and it's a level playing field, we'll meet whatever the standard is. We cannot say, oh, these people are good people, they're engineers, they do a good job, we can trust them to do the right thing. We have to have a standard that's in place and that applies to everyone.
I would agree, but to me, there's still a difference between a subdivision regulation and a comprehensive plan and a policy or a, that's in part of the comprehensive plan. Again, those are recommendations to me. It's recommended, I'm making my case as to what we've done to address that, I think we've addressed it. It does not, it's complete compliance. If this property were zoned R-1 today, it complies completely with the subdivision regulations as well as the zoning. So that's my take, and what my explanation is. I don't expect you to trust me that we're going to do the right thing. I am trying to convince you by obviously the design concept. You do not see very many subdivisions that are designed in this manner, to where we have four-thousand-feet of street with just lots on one side, just for the sole purpose of us making that common area an amenity, thereby, what it should, or at least in my opinion, that it speaks to, is our intent to preserve that and to make it what I think not only will make a nice subdivision, but does right by the environment as well.
Commissioners, I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this item? Oh, we do have. Would you come forward, please, give us your name and address, the record?
My name is Sunny Fletcher. I live on the other side of this property, and we moved there about two years ago, before the school. The school is just under construction, we didn't know there was a school. And now we have a lot of a problem because the road is so narrow, it's too, too lean, asphalt, and then...
Well, I'm sorry, which road are you referring to? Memorial?
Both, both. North Mustang Road and also North Memorial Road.
Okay.
So I'm just living on the other half-section. And then, the road is very narrow, and also there are a lot of potholes, and then I can't, we can't go out during the morning when the school is in session, and also when people pick up children, because they park this way, that way, there is no way for us to go out. There were several times the policeman escorted me back home. So I don't see anywhere that the road is addressed in this development. So I would like to see, I know that this place will be residential in the future, but I would like to see the road. And also, because you see that PUD fourteen sixty-four, it's only not to the Northwest Expressway yet, so I don't know what is the exit to this addition. And now with this bison newly built up and the other addition, it's very, very crowded every day. And also, I can tell you from my personal experience, the creek, last year, it was, it rained very, very hard, and I lost about twenty trees to the creek. It's because of the bison addition, they're developing that, and we went to find them, and they said, oh, this is just a natural course. If we show you the picture from two years ago, and, you know, this will happen. That's not true. When they develop that, and, you know, there's some construction materials there, stuck kind of the creek, and then I don't know what will happen, because the land fall to the creek, and I lost the trees, and that is exactly at the place where there is a little bridge. So it's going to be a hazardous, but there is only one family living across the street, which is us. I don't know how much attention we're going to get, but this is the two main things that I worry about, the road and the creek.
Tell me again where you live.
My address is one-one-one-zero-one, West Memorial Road. Just across the street, that, you see that AA, that a hundred-and-sixty acres is my property.
Okay. And with respect to the roads, there will not be any improvement in Memorial Road or Mustang Road in connection with this development?
I don't know what you guys are talking about. This is just, as a resident, we live there, I just want to, you know, address our concerns.
I suppose we...
So I don't know what this process in your approval procedure.
So what we're here today to talk about is whether this piece of property that delineated as PUD fourteen sixty-four, whether it is appropriate to reduce, basically, I mean, really what we're talking about here, whether it's appropriate to reduce the size of the lots that can be built on that piece of property from eight thousand to six thousand. Is that fair?
Correct.
I know the road is not related, however, the high in density, isn't that causing more problems with the road?
It does. It would increase the wear and tear on, and I'm not saying it's not related.
Yes.
But the infrastructure is definitely very much related. Does anybody know whether we have any improvement plans in place for either Memorial Road or Mustang Road? Is there somebody that can answer that question for us?
I can check.
I don't know whether there are currently plans in place for improvement to Memorial Road or Mustang Road in this area. We're checking with staff, they listen to these meetings, so we're checking to see. But, you know, we did a bond issue recently, and we have money still that we're spending from the last bond issue we did, so... Developers like this pay money into a fund that is then used to both do studies with respect to what kinds of improvements need to be made, and then eventually to help make those improvements. But they will not be required to go out and make these improvements themselves to either Memorial or Mustang Road as part of this process. Sure. There we go. Did you come to speak to us?
I can.
So I'm done. Thank you. Give us just a minute here, maybe I've got a, maybe I've got an answer for your question.
Jared Norris, Public Works Department. I know that we recently did a repaving project along Memorial at this location. I don't think we widened it, I think we just did some resurfacing.
Because of the school's package, early addition, actually would make it loose because of compatibility.
Ah. So just as a rule of thumb, if we did a repaving project, that would indicate to us that we don't have a plan to widen it anytime soon, or we wouldn't have repaved it, right?
Correct, yes.
What kind of a trajectory, are we looking at there, five, ten years?
I couldn't answer that, I'm in the...
Just even as a rule of thumb?
Well, it's about fifteen to, and it's pavement lifespan is about fifteen to twenty years.
So in the big picture of things, and not specifically with respect to this, but just the way these things go, it may be quite a while before they get around to actually widening either Memorial or Mustang?
I don't, I have no knowledge of Mustang Road.
Mustang Road, north of, north of, especially with the goat track.
Because the bison addition is already there.
Right.
And then the other existing addition, in my opinion, is sending it somewhere. It's already there, there's no way for you to widen it. The only way is you can cut through from Memorial to connecting to Northwest Expressway. That's the only way to do it, because the other place is all empty.
Okay. So neither of these, Memorial or Mustang, are in the bond, in the most recent bond issue. When we do developments like this, we reserve the right-of-way we need, whatever the city sees in terms of the future, and I'm guessing that would be four lane, both directions, both Mustang and Memorial. So when they get around to it, they'll have the land they need to do it, but we don't have any plans to do it currently. The city, bulk of the city, does not have plans to do it currently. Unfortunately, that kind of improvement follows development, it doesn't precede it. In a perfect world, of course, we would do those things first, but we'll have to wait until there are enough rooftops out there for us to decide we need to make those improvements. It's going to be a while. Sorry.
I do know, too, in regards to it making the news, they did open up that school, and part of that widening, or the surfacing project corresponded simultaneously with the opening of the school.
Oh, oh.
So they kind of had Memorial shut down to one lane, and that's a big issue that they had previously.
Oh, that was fun, yeah, okay. It's an elementary school, right?
It's a pre-K and a kindergarten.
Oh, okay. So that brings me to my other question about that. We're not doing sidewalks internally in this development?
No, we are.
We are?
Mm-hmm.
And so there'll be ways for children to get to this school on sidewalks?
Yes, actually, my client actually donated the property for the school. As part of that, he has an agreement with them, not only are we able to kind of share in their playground equipment, but obviously, we're providing pedestrian access through, it's hard to see on this, but you'll see it on the preliminary plat. We've got a common area that abuts the school on our north. We're going to do a little bit of detention in that, but the goal is, is to also be able to put a little more playground to, in essence, add to the schools. So there's kind of an ongoing cooperation.
And there will be access through the subdivision?
Exactly. There's pedestrian access from our addition into the school.
I don't know whether anybody lets their children walk to school anymore, but it's a nice idea. Commissioners, where are we?
You know, I talked to Mr. Dillon this morning, I think overall, I think it's a nice development with the open space, it's one of the things they intend to do. I do have a little bit of concern with that hundred-foot setback, but if that's the only thing that's holding us up, I think, I mean, I'm going to hear it.
Again, to be fair to Mr. Dillon, I think that's a bigger discussion than we can lay off on any day.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, yeah, we need, we need something that's a little bit more cut and dry in that. So if there are no further comments, I'll make a motion to approve PUD fourteen sixty-four.
Delete.
Eliminating those two TEs.
Thank you, eliminating TEs one and two. Second?
I have a motion second to approve item number fourteen as amended. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, C-7144, preliminary plat of Bison Creek East, same location.
Again, for the record, Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll representing the applicant. Obviously, the preliminary plat, I think there are five TEs, we're in agreement with all of those, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Tell me where all your common areas, your actual, like, recreational common areas are. This map is so tiny, I can't see anything.
This, you can, it's too small, it's yellow map, so if you notice, we have a common area down in the southeast corner, there's an existing pond. That's going to be one of our primary amenity areas. So we have that, and then you'll notice that we've got a traffic circle in this general area with a common area. We just want to landscape this, but if you'll notice, immediately to the west, we've created an area there that we want to have some more amenities, a playground or something, and then in addition to that, this is the area that I was talking about, that we have access to the school. We also have an agreement for our residents to utilize the potlot, in essence, that's a part of their school, but then our intent is to try to create some more playground equipment in this area. So in essence, you'll have amenities here, here, and there.
And we had, we had discussions on that south, I mean, the area that, I'd like to see in access from the north side.
We'll agree to that, yes.
And just generally speaking, I mean, I realize that all of these are controlled sort of by their terrain and drainage and all that sort of thing. There's an awful lot of space in the middle there without access to play area. And for a child to have to go from somewhere in the middle there to one of those outer ones, it's a long way. I really like to see, just as a general rule, you know, common area and amenities, play space especially, sort of scattered throughout these kinds of developments, there's a lot of rooftops.
Understood.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Commissioners?
There's no further discussion, I'll motion to approve preliminary plat, C-7144.
Second. I have a motion second to approve item number fifteen. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item sixteen is PUD seventeen forty-eight, application to rezone thirteen six-oh-one, Southwestern Avenue.
Once again, David Box, five-twenty-two Kauford Drive. With me here today is Todd Butler with TEC. This is a bit of a unique application in that what we are essentially trying to do is to remove requirements that currently exist in the PUD that's in place, that is to remove requirements that currently exist in the PUD that's in place that would require traffic improvement controls that we don't believe are warranted anymore. My client had the unfortunate situation of being, I think, one of the last few PUDs to move through the process prior to the city changing the ordinance where traffic impact studies were no longer required, and instead, developers pay now impact fees, as we all know. I am of the opinion that if we came through today on this land without any zoning, there would have never been a request that we do a traffic signal. So, what we did was, we filed the PUD. We went and asked staff, what do we need to do to get the requirement that the traffic signal be installed to be lifted? We met with Eric Winger in Public Works, as well as Stuart Chai, the city traffic engineer. It was stated to us that they are willing to support our efforts if we can produce a traffic study that would, in fact, confirm what we believe to be the answer. So, we set out to have Mr. Butler redo the traffic study. One of the things that have changed is about half of the lots that we originally projected will be able to be built now. An oil and gas company bought a big chunk of our property. The plat there, I believe, is, my understanding is, no longer exists. So, the traffic study presented to Mr. Chai was analyzed. What I handed out was Mr. Chai's response. I'll just read that last paragraph. "Since the engineering study concludes that no traffic signal warrants will be met under the revised, fully developed conditions, in the absence of any mitigating safety-related factors such as insufficient decision site distance, traffic management decision, excuse me, division, staff does not have cause to recommend the use of signalized traffic control at the subject intersection at this time." So, what I attempted to do in this PUD is to carry over all of the previous agreements in PUD 1511, but for the traffic controls. I did, however, forget to include these distance requirements as it relates to residential uses and a few uses. That's what you see as TE number one, so we do agree with that. That's that 150 feet for those three uses. We do agree to TE 5, and we do agree to TE 6. We don't agree to TEs 2, 3, and 4. All of those relate to the traffic issues that we are trying to eliminate. As I said, Mr. Butler is here if you want to hear the details of the traffic study. But as I point out through Mr. Chai's email, I believe traffic staff is now in agreement that based upon the numbers and the data, those things in TE 2, 3, and 4 are no longer warranted, therefore, we would ask that they be removed.
Commissioners, do we want to hear from Mr. Butler? I think this is, you know, we've had this conversation over and over again. I think this is a situation where these agreements were in place at one time, the city, for whatever reason, did not require that they be built at the time, and, you know, although I am not in agreement with your view of impact fees, you know, I don't think that the purpose of them is to prohibit people from, to alleviate the need for traffic impact studies where they're warranted, and in case, in fact, in this case, you ended up doing one, so, but...
Well, in fairness, we only did one because that's what Public Works demanded in order to justify the removal. I have yet to see, since the passage of that ordinance, anyone be required to do a traffic impact study. So, yes, I do believe that we disagree on what the ordinance allows.
I do believe we do.
I would like to hear what the current counts are on Western. The latest information, I was able to get access with ACOG's 2017 count, and it was just over 12,000 vehicles a day traveling on Western.
So, we do want to hear from Mr. Butler.
Todd Butler, traffic engineering consultant, 6,000 Southwestern, Oklahoma City. The current counts would be shown in Figure 2 of the study. If you all had a copy of that along Western, there's still about 12,000 a day, based on what we collected recently.
So, can I just ask, catch the chase, if the counts haven't changed, why is something that was thought to be required back then no longer thought to be required?
Well, if you look at the development layout now, as compared to what it was, as I've included in the report, there was a reduction in the number of lots from 423 down to 217. So, it reduced the amount of traffic using access to and from Western. That's the difference.
So, even though the counts have not dropped?
The counts on Western have not dropped. The counts going in and out of the development are expected to drop because of the reduction of the size of the development.
I see. Does anybody else have any questions, Mr. Butler? Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on this item?
That with no other discussion. This is a good fit for this part of the world, right across the street from where the new senior wellness center is going to be. Pete Buchanan came in front of us three or four months ago, and was putting an office park in, so it's going to fill it in nicely. So, removing TEs 2, 3, and 4, I'll move approval of PUD 1748.
Second. I have a motion as second to approve item number 16, removing TEs 2, 3, and 4. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you.
Commissioners, is my goal to be out of here by 3 o'clock today? I didn't quite meet that goal. The other items on the agenda have either been continued or withdrawn, planning commission committees, planning commission members.
Will see an update on the zoning code work?
I think our consultants will be back in town, you know, later this month or next month, is that right?
They'll be doing interviews with different staff.
What's, what are we missing behind the scenes right now? Is there a lot of work going on right now? Are you guys doing a lot, or?
Planning is.
Gotcha.
We miss Jeff. We'll have to get that from him next time.
A lot of work is happening. It's just, it's all under wraps currently. Okay.
I don't like that characterization. There's nothing being done in secret or behind closed doors. It's just it's in very preliminary stages.
There's nothing being done publicly, though, either.
I think everything that's being done is being done publicly. It's just that we're in very preliminary stages. There's not a lot happening at the moment, in my view.
I'm not accusing anybody of trying to be secretive.
I appreciate that. Development Services, municipal counselor, citizens to be heard, other business? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, move. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? You guys stay safe out there.